All right. Well, regardless, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is Pompano Beach City Commission Workshop, having to do with aviation safety and all matters about the airpark. Let's go ahead and call the roll. Mr. Alfred. And just for the record, this meeting is being voice recorded and also tape recorded, so it will be available for review afterwards. Just want to let everyone know that. So, thank you. Go ahead, Kirwan.
Commissioner Fezick.
Here.
Commissioner Perkins. Commissioner Sigerson.
Sir.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Vice Mayor Quaney.
Here.
Mayor Hart.
Here. I see the agenda calls for the Pledge of Allegiance next, but I don't see a flag in this room.
So, just some of the agenda.
No flag. Okay, we'll dispense with the Pledge of Allegiance. There's Commissioner Sigerson Eaton coming in from the back. All right, let's move on. Can I get a motion approving the agenda for this morning?
So moved.
In second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, we're going to open it up, discussion on airpark aviation activities and safety concerns. Of course, this meeting was requested by Commissioner Fezick and others to discuss matters that pertain to our airpark as far as noise, safety concerns, the operations there. And Steve Rocco, our airpark manager, of course, he's been dealing with these types of issues for years, as everyone up here knows. But we do actually have a representative from the FAA here today, so we're going to go ahead and have a little presentation by Steve Rocco, followed by our FAA representation, and then we will open it up for questions and comments. And anyone who wants to speak will need to come to the center microphone up here, one at a time. And when you do come up to speak, please give your name and address so we can get it for the recorded set, all right? With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Rocco.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. My name's Steve Rocco. I'm the airport manager at the Pompano Beach Airpark. And as the mayor said, we're here today to discuss safety and noise concerns at the Pompano Beach Airpark. For the past 20 years that I've been here, we've been dealing with this issue. The city is the airport sponsor. We run the airport, but unfortunately, the FAA controls the airport. The city has no regulatory authority to impose fines, restrict access, deny access to aircraft operating from the Pompano Beach Airport. So, this meeting was called by, or requested by Commissioner Fezick, and we were able to secure a FAA FISDO representative to come to the meeting to talk to us and discuss aircraft safety. FISDO is the Flight Standards District Office. They're responsible for aircraft safety. The ADO, which is the Airport District Office in Orlando, is responsible for airport compliance as far as the runways, taxiways, lightings, NAV-8s, all those types of systems. So, we have a representative for aircraft safety here because that seems to be the big concern that we want to discuss. So with that, I will introduce Mr. Jimmy Meiget, who is with the FISDO FAST team, which stands for FAA.
Safety Team.
Safety Team.
So, good morning, everyone. Thanks for inviting me to this, to this event. Again, I work for the FISDO out of the Marimar office. I'm not with the ADO, so anything for airport operations related goes to the Orlando ADO office. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have about aircraft safety related to the operating in the airspace. Again, the FAST team's mission is to help reduce the nation's aircraft and accident incident rate, so that's what I do. I review data, and I do promotion, education, and training to the public. It's just myself and another representative, FAST representative for South Florida. We cover from Stewart down to Key West and all the way over to Naples. That's our coverage area for our office. It's a pretty big area for just the two of us, and we use members in the community to help us with our mission. So without those members, it would be very difficult for us to do our job. So we have FAA representatives, our pilots, mechanics throughout South Florida that help us educate the public on different safety events. And we have certain ones out here north of this airport and Boca Raton, and we provide seminars and training events throughout the months at different airports. We have probably the closest one for Pompano is the Boca Pilots Association. We have a meeting there every month that you can attend, and we have great, interesting topics that are always published. If you don't know about fasafety.gov, I encourage you to go to fasafety.gov. You'll see my contact information on there and the things we provide. So there's a lot of free training, education material on that website that you could use. So with that, I think we're great partners with all our airports. We work together and we try to alleviate any safety concerns that may be addressed in our office. Again, I used to be an ASI for our office. I've been with FAA for eight years, six years as an ASI Aircraft Aviation Safety Inspector. And then now, for the last two years, I've been part of the FAST team doing education, promotion, and training. So that, I think that's about it.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you for that overview and introduction. Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Please come forward, just come to the center microphone and give your name and address for the record and make any comments, questions, anything like that. So please come forward. This is the opportunity to discuss matters that have been going on for years. So come on forward.
Yes.
Use the press. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. This is Clinton Mueller, 1080 Northeast 28th here in Pompano Beach. First of all, to you, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Commissioner Smith, Eaton, Fezick, thank you all. Commissioner Fezick, thank you for bringing this to the attention of the community, and thank you all for taking this serious enough to basically expedite a meeting here. So, thank you. The concerns that we have as a public pertain to safety, okay? And not just, obviously, so your explanation, funny enough, around the FSDO versus ADO basically is helpful because there's some issues that we have as it relates to runway use as well. So I'm assuming that that one means we have to utilize the Orlando office for that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, Mr. Rivera, when I had a dialogue with him, and really, your whole FAA team has been outstanding in communicating and relaying a lot of this to me as well, but he had told me that basically that the air was the jurisdiction of the FAA, and the ground operations and the protocol on the ground at the airport was the airpark.
Well, the airpark is a public use airport, so it is federally funded, and the FAA, part of the FAA, the ADO, controls that portion of the airports.
So, one of the reason why I ask is, so, we have obviously runway 1533, we have 624, and we have 1028. And when they did the assessments, well, two things. One of which is, we're hoping obviously to have a noise study obviously completed and done by the FAA. Hopefully, we can formally request that to be done. In addition, an environmental survey to please be conducted around the airport as well.
And FISDOs don't do those as well.
That's all ADO.
Yeah.
Okay. So I don't know what we can do from a protocol standpoint in the city to make sure those two things have been done, but they have not been done in a very long time. And as beautiful as it is about the development that's basically happened here in Pompano over the last 10 years, that was the last time that one of these surveys was done, and a lot has changed in our city in 10 years. So with that being said, in addition to that, the concern that we had around the runway had to do with, obviously with 10, 10 is much shorter than the other two runways, and the proximity to residential, both on the east and west. So when you look at the airpark master plan that exists here and the development that we have around it and the business that we're trying to bring and develop and the hangars we're trying to establish, there's no mention in the airpark master plan of the proximity to residential, okay? And so, the reason why safety is so critically important particularly with 10 and obviously to our broader, you know, runways as well, is because of the fact that it's 1,800 feet from the end of runway 10 heading east before you hit residential on the other side, just behind the gym there. So, anything that is single-engine craft that are coming off of there to hit that, they're on a common basis, and I have an ADS-B radar affixed to my home. It has a clear view both of east, west, and south. So the variance is only about 30 feet on that radar, but we're seeing, as it gets to 1,800 feet, right at the start of residential, we're seeing 120, 150 feet on planes there. And I know that's during the takeoff procedure, right? But there's a safe rate of climb, which is why I'm glad that you're here, right? There is also standards that were established that were also modified in 2021, that was the noise abatement procedures that were put in place, that clearly communicate what the rate of climb is. It also clearly communicates what the preference of runway was, and we're not seeing those at the moment being followed, right? So we're not seeing the climbs basically getting to the 500 feet, nosing off, and then turning to the north. We're seeing them going at 150, we're seeing them go at 200, 200, 300 feet maybe. And as they're doing that, now my home, I have the good fortune of being 4,200 feet from the end of the runway. And even at 4,200 feet, we're seeing regularly still 200, 250, 300 feet on altitudes of some aircraft. Now, I will also concede, since July, when we had this, I have noticed that some schools and some pilots have actually improved overall. In fact, some of the ones that we've reported to the FSDO office have actually improved their altitudes going out and going around, and those people should be commended for doing so, right? But there's a culture piece here, there's an enforcement piece here, you know, and I understand that it's voluntary due to the AOPA lawsuit in 2019. But if we have an agreement on behalf of the community, and we say with the airpark, and we say with the pilots, and we say with all the other organizations that are out there, let's come to an agreement on something, sure, it's voluntary, but it would be really nice if we could get full buy-in and get people to follow it, right? So, we've submitted a lot to the FSDO, and again, I appreciate you coming. You know, we would like to look at, aside from those other two items specifically around aircraft, I'd like to see the minimum gradient climb, if there's a way to do it. I spoke with a gentleman out of Lantana, and he said that you guys had had dialogue with that airport as well on improving the minimum gradient climb for each individualized runway. We have three here, to make sure that they're able to, and they know that the climb rate they need to climb particularly off of 10 where it's the closest to residential, so that they can get to that necessary altitude so that basically they're not going at 10:30, 11 o'clock at night in circles continuously when you have children trying to sleep, and you have animals, and you have people who basically may turn in earlier, because it going at 200, 250 feet, that shakes your home with a single piston, right? So, we were asking for that help, and again, I know the takeoff and the landing is, it's a gray area because basically there's nothing that you guys could technically do to enforce it other than tell them, hey, play nice, right?
Correct.
However, however, there's also a number of occasions on downwinds that we've reported as well to FSDO, which is enforceable, where they are well below 800 feet heading downwards into Commissioner Eaton's district and the Commissioner Perkins' district. And in those situations, we would like to, we would like to know as a community, I know that you guys look into them, but we'd like to know that we're getting a little more than just a warning and a slap on the wrist maybe to the people who do violate, you know, if they have to be relicensed, if they have to basically, you know, face a fine or fee, so to speak, that we're doing so so that we can help alleviate the concerns that the broader community has. At this juncture, thank you again very much for coming. Mr. Rocco?
Yes, sir.
I do have a question from the airpark standpoint. So you guys had brought up the fact that you guys are not able to fine or fee anybody, correct?
Correct.
So my question being is, I would like to propose, since the noise ordinance as a whole and the standards that are established in there as a whole are voluntary, would it be emblematic, would it be something worth exploring if there was effectively a voluntary thing that was collected from people? So you have a representative that would be there or somebody like this that would say, hey, listen, on these times, it's voluntary, but we're going to raise money basically into a designated fund, and those violations that basically we earmark, we find, it'll go towards scholarships for the kids basically in the at-risk communities that are here in Pompano Beach to actually learn at the new trade school that's going up there, or to the flight schools, so that we can actually do some community good with it? Would that be something worth exploring as well?
So, we cannot impose fines or fine the operators of the airport because of the fact that they're already, an operator on the airport, they're paying rent, they're paying fuel surcharges, taxes to the FAA Aviation Trust Fund. Because 95% of the operators on our field are based on our airport, we can't impose fines. We can ask the FAA, but they're going to come back and say, you cannot impose fines on the operators of the airport. This is a federally funded, federally obligated facility. We have to adhere to the FAA deed restrictions, the FAA Airport Compliance Manual, the grant assurances. If we start imposing fines and charging users to use the airport, we're in violation of those deed restrictions and those grant assurances. Then the FAA can come back and say, we, the city, need to pay back all of the funds that we've received through the years, and/or they can revert the airport. They can take the airport back and give it to either an airport authority, Broward County Aviation Department, or another entity that wants to run the airport.
Okay, but I wasn't talking about mandating, right? So as the noise abatement procedure is voluntary, okay? Why can those contributions not be done in the same manner that we basically, if we have a charitable organization that's out there raising money and lobbying basically to try to drive funds in towards a community good, why could we not establish some sort of entity either through the Airport Advisory Board or something like that to raise funds to do a community good while actually asking the broader airpark community to effectively lean on one another to make sure that they're following the noise abatement guidelines from 2021, to make sure that they're going at minimum safe altitudes, to make sure that they're doing all of those things? And when they step out of line, maybe not yourself, you know, maybe you say, hey, listen, we have this voluntary type of thing that exists, but maybe we allow, you know, the organizations that are out there to kind of lean on one another and say, hey, you got to put, you know, $100 in that jar, or whatever it would be, in an effort to try to move the needle? Because ultimately, right now with the workshop and what I saw, so I read in detail the AOPA lawsuit in 2019, and when I took a read at that in 2019, the one thing that stuck out to me was is basically the restrictions that are basically, that were removed, because, correct me if I'm wrong, but prior to the 2019 lawsuit, you guys actually did enforce it up until that point?
No. So the lawsuit was in 2004. The initial ordinance that was drafted 95-79 was an ordinance that was passed back before my time.
Okay.
Which created a vehicle to fine aircraft operators that were not adhering to the airport's noise abatement procedure. So we requested, or the ordinance requested, that aircraft operators, touch and goes, be performed between the hours of 9 to 5, Monday through Friday, excluding weekends and holidays.
Okay.
So when the ordinance was passed, initially, the airport manager at the time would send letters to the violators. We, back then, we hired airport operations people to specifically sit at the end of the runway and write down all the end numbers of the aircraft operating during the non-touch-and-go times. That list was given to the airport manager. The airport manager would go to the FAA website to find out all of the end numbers. It's so much more difficult back then than.
Yeah.
Then the airport manager would send a, first, a warning letter to the operator saying, hey, on this day and this time, you violated our touch-and-go ordinance 95-79. We request that you adhere to our noise ordinance, you know, in the future, you will be fined 50, I think it was $50, if you violate in the future. So, the airport manager would get letters back or calls, telephone calls back saying, I wasn't flying the airplane, I leased the airplane, it's not my airplane, and even if you fine me, I'm not paying it. This is a public use civil aviation facility, it's federally obligated, federally funded, you cannot fine me. And so that went on for several years. Then in 2004, there was a caveat put onto the 95-79. There's another ordinance drafted, 2004, I think it was 08, which then restricted helicopter activity over the airport. That was the final straw that broke AOPA's back. So the users on the airfield, the flight schools, the AOPA Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association filed an FAA Part 16 complaint, which is a lawsuit, against the city, saying that the city was discriminating and violating their user obligations, or user activities at the airport. The city hired an aviation attorney. We spent $250,000 with an aviation law firm to defend our actions. It went to the FAA, and as you read from the director's determination, they advised us that because we're receiving grant assurances, because we're deed-restricted airport, surplus property airport, we cannot fine or restrict that type of act. So they asked us or told us that we had to rescind those ordinances. So I think it was in 2006, the ordinances rescinded. So we've never had a fining mechanism for any of the users at the airport.
So even though it was, it's in the city charter, right?
Not any.
Was that removed? So, and Chapter 91, right, of the airpark?
Chapter 93 of the airpark.
93, sorry.
Right. So the ordinances that are in there that are, some of them have been rescinded, but they do need to be updated. And that discussion has been had with the city attorney's office to update the city's charter for the airpark.
Part of the trouble that we have as a citizenry, and by the way, if anybody else would like to speak, please, by all means, let me know. But part of the problem that we have as a citizenry is in trying to take a look online and trying to find information that's online, sometimes actually through our website, there's conflicting information, okay? And what I mean by that is, is there's actually two separate noise abatement pieces that are actually on the website through the city of Pompano. In addition to that, the other thing is, is even runway dimensions. So you have the master plan that's basically there, you have the information that was submitted on September 5th to the AOPA for our runways as well, and then you have also what we have. So we've seen stuff as low as 3,000, you know, in fact, Dr. Good was kind enough during her presentation to go through and help reconcile some of the differences there on that, right? But the point being is, is getting the information and doing the amount of digging that this citizen group has basically done and the research that we've had to do on our end could be alleviated if we were a little better organized and made sure that the information was current and the information that was on the site was accurate so that we can... I worry a lot of times that if you come up with the incorrect data, that somehow or another it dissuades your argument, but if the data's coming from the site from a couple different sources, and I'm happy to furnish you with those links, I have your email, I can send you so you can see the multiple ones.
Okay. So, in the airport website, on the airpark website from the city, all of that data is up to date. The airport master plan is on there, the ALP, the airport layout plan is on there, the noise abatement guidelines are on there. That is all up to date. Now, as far as the city charter, Chapter 93, yes, I believe some of those ordinances are out of date, and they should be removed from the document, but that's a discussion for the city attorney's office.
Okay. All right. So, again, thank you guys for doing this, and thank you for holding a workshop. Hopefully, we can find some common ground between all of us here on how to basically improve the situations that are in and around the airports so that we do all feel like this is a community and we're all working together, and not that it's being pushed in one direction.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
I have a few questions in response to some of the issues that Mr. Mueller brought up.
Sure, for the...
Yes.
Sure.
Okay. So, I do think that the voluntary noise abatement procedures are something we should look at and perhaps disseminate more widely. I find people want to do the right thing, they really do, but education and awareness is often the problem. So, one of the things in here that I wanted to make sure we talked about today is the use of runway 15 instead of runway 10 when calm wind conditions exist, and how ATC determines that, and if there's any directive to ATC to prioritize 15, at what is the threshold, at five knots, seven knots, 10 knots? Mr. Rocco, what is the directive to ATC to use runway 15, which I assume, I'm going to assume pilots don't want to because of the distance and taxiing, but what is going on with the use of 15 versus 10 at what wind conditions?
So, the FAA Air Traffic Control Tower is supposed to use FAA Order JO-7110-65. I don't, there's so many numbers and acronyms, but they're the ones, the FAA Air Traffic Control Tower are the ones that prescribe which runway to use. As far as calm wind, yes, we've requested, we've asked the tower, you know, hey, if you can, put them on runway 15, and they do when it's feasible. Unfortunately, at Pompano, runway 1028, as far as the airport master plan and layout plan is concerned, the majority of the winds are out of the east or southeast. So 95% coverage of the winds, the wind cone, the wind rose, covers runway 1028. That's why we use it 70% of the time. 1533 is used mostly for the larger mid-sized corporate business jets that fly in and out of Pompano. When the winds are out of the southeast, believe me, we use, we use all the runways when the winds are out of the direction for that runway use. You know, we can recommend, or we can ask the Air Traffic Control Tower to use a calm wind, and they do, but we cannot mandate or dictate to them how to direct or control the aircraft.
I understand and appreciate that, but there is a significant southeast component to runway 15 also, and if not more. And if the winds are calm, which it often is here, we're not, you know, do we have a number or some kind of guideline? I get safety is the utmost priority, so that will trump anything. However, if we have winds under 10 knots out of the southeast, why aren't we using runway, like, why is there not a directive to ATC to prioritize runway 15?
Well, I mean, there's no directive for ATC to tell which runway to use, but, you know, for the winds, what about five knots, I believe it is?
Five or...
They move the aircraft in the direction of the wind, so...
Yeah.
But, I can't really answer for what ATC is, this is on selecting which runway to use, but...
Right. It's also a much longer runway, so from a safety perspective, if the winds are low, it's probably preferable. So I think that's something we really need to consider and talk to ATC about because, like I said, my guess is the pilots want to use 1028. It's closer, it's easy, but this is where there's a give and take here, right? So if you want to do touch and goes all day, maybe you have to taxi out to the further runway and, you know, and as long as the winds are low. So that's one thing I'd really like us to look into, is how we use runway 15 more, especially given that it's also got an east component to it, a southeast component, and the winds are pretty low here for the most part. So that's one thing. Let me finish, let me just finish real quick, and then, yeah. So, the only other thing I want to say is, these noise abatement procedures, why it sounds like they're not enforceable, that we can't fine people. When someone signs up for flight lessons, do they get this and have to sign it? Do we have signage up at the flight schools? Like I said, awareness and education is important, and I'm sure that our flight schools want to be good partners. So if we had some, you know, not this level of detail in signage, but some really clear signage that helped at the flight schools, people, like, you know, remind them of it when they walk in, that might be helpful too.
Yeah, so I know that I have personally provided each one of the flight schools and their flight operations director with a copy of the noise abatement guidelines and procedures. I do know, and there's representatives here from some of the flight schools, but they are working with, and every student that they bring on to train, they give them a copy of these flight noise abatement procedures. I don't know how they teach it, but they do, and they are addressing it. And again, there's flight schools here that can address it and answer your question better than I can, but I know that all of the operators on the field have been given copies of the noise abatement, recommended voluntary noise abatement guidelines, and I just encourage them, I'm constantly calling them and educating, please, please, let your students know, please, if you can, adhere to these voluntary measures to the best of your ability, again, because we do not have enforcement action.
Right. So it's more like a... So it's more like a be a good neighbor campaign. You have to appeal, like I said, to the goodness in people that they want to participate, but I think maybe we could work with the community and the flight schools on some succinct signage that takes this, these voluntary procedures and pulls out the key parts of it, and I'm sure we can even help, you know, create the signage if necessary to, to be a better, to encourage people to be a better neighbor. And the only other thing I want to mention quickly is, I appreciate this from the, from Jimmy, the FAA data on accidents, because this, this is in the news a lot, we've all seen North Perry, and it, it does appear, based on the data, that we, we don't have, you never want to say these things, but safety, we are a safe airport relative to the, the other neighboring air parks. Is that...
Correct, that's correct, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I've got a quick question to follow up from Mr. Mueller's comments. Jimmy, have, because he mentioned up in Lantana that he spoke to someone in Lantana about a rate of climb recommendation or something. Do you, do you have any knowledge of that?
I, I haven't been through that study, no, so.
No, no, I'm not saying that you've been to that site. Do you have any knowledge of any kind of a rate of climb study or recommendation or, or agreements?
I do not.
You do not?
No.
Okay, at your level, okay. Also, to follow up on the Vice Mayor's comments, I just question, have there ever been any studies as far as, I'm, I'm sure there have, as far as length of runway and the height, the sit, the height the aircraft can get to based upon the prevailing winds, direction and speed? And the reason for my question there is fifteen versus ten, fifteen is much longer. So if you had a two knot situation that favors ten, but it's marginal ten, and you've got a much longer runway with fifteen in that two knot situation, you'd have a much safer situation if you used fifteen. Do you, do you know, are there any studies that ever looked at that?
That, that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. If there, if a study was done to look at something like that and it turned out it was much safer and in many circumstances to use fifteen as opposed to ten in certain low wind conditions, would that be a reason then for air traffic control to, I mean, who directs ATC?
Yeah, I mean, ATC has their own office, so, they are at our Marimar Building, so if you want to, you know...
But I mean, they're still under the FAA, correct?
They're still under the FAA umbrella, yeah.
Okay.
But they're, they're a different...
And the FAA is all about, all about safety?
Correct.
Okay, so if, if the study showed in low wind conditions fifteen would actually get aircraft to a safer altitude quickly before the end of the runway, I would think that the FAA would like it if ATC would use fifteen more often.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, that's, that, that was my question, that's all, we can move on. Go ahead. Questions, questions, but then...
Yes.
So questions on Mr. Mueller.
So I actually, just to, to touch on the Lantana piece, I had a really great conversation with Casey from the Pompano Beach Flying Club, who was very, very informative. As you can imagine, learning a lot about airplanes as a non-pilot, based on neighborhood concerns, is a whole new world, and I know we have a couple pilots up here. So it's, it's actually interesting, though, what experienced pilots had to offer in terms of some of this, and I, I want to make sure that I give him credit where credit is due. So he was, he was actually the one to give me the Lantana Airport, which they have their, they have a little handout that you can download off their, off their website, and it has the AOPA Noise Awareness Steps, just like a little S or, you know, like thirteen steps. It just says their recommendations and they're general in nature, transponder uses strongly encouraged, and then it just says in like yellow, which is kind of cute. Yeah? Yeah, so, no, so this is part of his questions, there is a question, so don't worry. So the question is, is, he offered this signage here, right? So I wanted to show what it looks like, because it's kind of cool, if you're, if you're a resident, you want to know this. It says, "Attention pilots, LNA is a noise-sensitive airport, be a good neighbor, please follow the noise abatement procedures when using Lantana Airport." Is this something that, that we could do? And I actually asked him specific if he could help me direct this and, and kind of correct it somewhat that he thought might be applicable to our airport, since he had a lot more knowledge of our airport rather than, you know, he said that both of them are similar. So he actually walked me through correcting some of this to maybe be a more friendly or safe way. Do you think this is something that we could adopt and maybe just update our noise abatement procedures to be more, I guess, up to date and/or in line with some of these safety options?
Sure, we can, we can review that, look at that. However, at the end of each of our runways, we do have a big yellow sign that says, "This is a noise-sensitive airport, please fly quietly, please follow NBAA close-in noise procedures, please follow AOPA." So at the end of each of our runways, we have that yellow signage out there requesting that our pilots adhere to the...
I'll give you the, I'll give you the, the PDF version, I made one, a prettier one for you, so that just in case, and then if you want to correct it, and I'm, I'm happy to get you the file, but I figured in the effort of working together, that the whole concept was to have a good conversation and bring everybody together. I feel like a lot of times, and, and so I did want to have this meeting, but I feel like a lot of times there's, when you have people complaining or upset or whatever, right, there's tension, and instead of tension, I wanted to make, make sure we relieve that tension and try to really come together. So I really would love to hear from pilots, if you're, if there's pilots here.
Well, let's go, let's go and open it back up to the public now. I believe we had one lady, one, one to speak next. Come on forward, just name an address, please, for the record.
Wendy Weinstein, twenty-seven eleven Northeast Third Street, Pompano. So I wanted to specifically respond to all the talk about... Closer, okay. Ten and fifteen. So fifteen may be longer, and I live under fifteen, but I have all of these documents showing one fifty, three hundred, two seventy-five, two hundred. So although it's longer, it's not taking care of the issue. I think part of it's the touch and goes, because if they touch, they're not going until now you are on a shorter runway. So I think to me, it's the bigger issue about getting the planes higher, the safety issue, and also the noise abatement issue. I know I've called the airpark and spoken with you, Steve Rocco, and you've mentioned it's like ninety-five. You know, we can't do anything, we can't control, we can't regulate. But if I speed on ninety-five, I can get a ticket, a fine, et cetera. So I don't know why the pilots can just do whatever they want and nobody has the opportunity to regulate or enforce. I have documented and sent to FAA some violations, and they are investigating those. So are they the only avenue we have? And do I have to do that for every single plane that comes and is in, you know, this low-flying altitude over the home?
Well, I mean, any aircraft that you think are violating any type of airspace, you can send it to our office and we'll investigate it, so.
I'm going to be very busy. I mean, really, I don't have time.
You can send us, you can send us a list of names, just like, you know, others have sent us of, of different, not names, but of tell numbers that you think are operating.
So again, I don't understand why there isn't more enforcement available. I mean, I'm hearing what you're saying, but it's not kind of getting through in some ways. FAA has guidelines on the low-flying aircraft, so it seems that there would be more that could be done. And I know there's more issues, but I know other people want to talk, but I wanted to respond specifically to that because it's a big involvement, it's not just ten.
Thank you, appreciate that. Next speaker?
Good morning, thank you guys, I really appreciate you guys attending today. They have...
Name an address.
Oh, sorry, Carrie Ann Worley, nine nine zero, northeast twenty-seventh Avenue. Couple things, one, I did sit down with Steve Rocco, and I really appreciate that conversation. I know you have done some things to put in place, but I was able to also talk to Stacy Heaton, she's the Southern Regional Manager of AOPA, and she did have some other options, you know, that we could put in place. Thank you, Commissioner Fezick, I know you brought up some of the guidelines, you know, at Lantana. One thing that you, Steve, said, you have it at the end of the runway. I know, I'm a private pilot, and I was just at FXE just recently, and as I rolled out to the runway, there is a huge sign, you know, and you can't miss it. So I don't, I've never seen the sign, probably because I'm just too focused on, you know...
They blend in with the informational signage, because they're yellow, yellow and black. Maybe we change the color, you know, we can do that. That would be a question that I'd have to discuss with the FAA, because certain nomenclature and certain signs on the airfield can only be certain colors according with FAA regulations.
Right, so I appreciate that, if you could look into that, because I think that, you know, again, it was like, you know, you couldn't miss it, for sure. Some other options and suggestions that she had was adding a statement to the AWAS, you know, so maybe family-friendly, you know, instructions or something like that. And then I know, or possibly rerunning the noise contours, I think we did one ten years ago. From what I understand, the, they estimated what the noise would be in ten years, and it's lower, but, you know, maybe just taking a look at, at what that is. And I think, you know, and I, I really appreciate what, you know, the residents have done, really brought this forward, and again, I appreciate you guys taking the time this morning. But, you know, there are a few things that we can do, and I know I'm just talking about noise right now, and I know this is also a safety issue, and I think, you know, with, with Clinton and Marilyn, I know that they've done a lot of research, and so I'll let them speak on that, but if we could just take a look at some of those very minor things that need to be, you know, that we can put in place to, to, to help the neighborhood. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Next speaker? Just name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Casey Albin, one oh three seven five Northwest Thirty-Ninth Manor, Coral Springs. Not a resident of Pompano, but I am a member of the Board of the Pompano Beach Flying Club, and I wanted to share our perspective. We've been flying out of this airport since nineteen seventy-one, we have eighty members, many of whom live in the city, and we very much want to be a good neighbor. We're also very focused on safety as pilots. I just want to share that most GA pilots would support reasonable guidelines, both to the time of flight as well as runway operations. A big thing for us is the crosswind limitations, single-engine aircraft typically have a crosswind limit of somewhere between fifteen and seventeen knots. So I know ATC is going to consider that when they are determining which runway, but there are plenty of times where either one five three three or six two four would be an acceptable runway choice to, to us, and ATC may choose to use one zero two eight. At night, the winds are typically calmer. One five three three, when permitting, is, at least from my perspective, is actually a preferred runway. It's a longer runway, it's a little well-lit, and selfishly, I'm instrument-rated, and there is an instrument approach to runway one five that is authorized at night. A couple other things I just want to share, the twenty-twenty-one guidelines are pretty good. Lantanas are a good example of where the community and the airport have worked together. Our guidelines do call for best angle of climb on one zero, which is going to be a little bit steeper gradient because it's so close to the residential area. I will say, as an organization, we're tenants on the airport, we weren't really aware of the guidelines until these conversations started happening. I know the flight schools are in constant contact with airport management. I think one opportunity is to work with shelter and make sure that they're communicating to all of their tenants. The flight schools are engaged in the business and talking to Steve and his team on a day-to-day, but we're all recreational pilots, we may fly two, three times a month, we're not as engaged on a regular basis in, in the operation. So I think that might be an opportunity. The other thing I'd like to clarify for some of the residents is the difference between touch and goes and full-stop landings. I know night operations are a bone of contention. I will say that I have been guilty of flying later than you all might have liked, I apologize for that. But night operations, FAA requires us to conduct three takeoffs and landings every ninety days to be able to carry passengers at night, and that requires us to fly at least an hour after sunset or before sunrise. So reasonable guidelines that allow us to perform those operations sometime between maybe seven AM and eleven PM, I think would be reasonable. I don't think any reasonable general aviation pilot would oppose that. I also don't see any reason why anybody needs to be out doing multiple landings at two AM, and I certainly oppose that. So I appreciate this meeting, look forward to further conversations, and I just want to say that our organization, we want to be a good neighbor, and we would like to be part of the solution. So thank you for doing this.
Thank you for that, appreciate it. I just, next speaker, please come forward. And while the next speaker's coming up, I just want to point out how, how impactful that last speaker was. If we could, you know, marshal the forces of the flying public to try and impress upon the FAA and others that are in decision-making positions, that the flying public oftentimes is in favor of reasonable, reasonable guidelines. So that's, I think that's something, thank, thank you, sir, for showing up. Go ahead, Martini.
Marilyn DiMartini, Marilyn DiMartini, eleven ten Northeast Twenty-seventh Avenue, Pompano Beach. Thank you, Casey, for clarifying the viewpoint of experienced pilots. I want to make one thing clear, we are not against the airport, we are not trying to close the airport down. We respect the fact that it's been here since World War II and was a training airpark, airport at the time, and the community sees the airpark as a park. We don't want it to become FXE. We don't want it to become a bigger airport that is a detriment to the community. Dave Botzer and I, who has lived in the, in our house for forty-one years, and I formed originally Neighbors Against Airpark Noise, and then we added pollution, because we wanted to give a voice to the community that has for many years been blocked, you know, at, at their complaints, calling the airpark and being told, "There's nothing we can do." We own and operate the airport, it's controlled by the FAA, and I'm very stubborn professional. I don't believe in the words, "There's nothing we can do." I believe that there's always something reasonable professionals can do when they sit together and come up with solutions. So I'm very grateful that we finally got to this point after a year and a half of organizing slowly the public and, you know, through our Facebook page and just raising awareness. We have gone to airport, airpark advisory board meetings, and we're told that we can't do anything, you know, we're just here to advise, but they advise the city on the decisions to make about the airpark. Steve is tired of being yelled at, as he said, he said, "The FAA is not going to come to a meeting because they don't want to be yelled at." We're not yelling, we're trying to be heard, and when we come up against blocks that say there's nothing we can do, we're not accepting that. So we are trying to work with everyone in a cooperative manner. We even changed our name to Neighbors for Safety and Reform, because we are not against, we're for. But from, from the FAA standpoint, and I have done countless, countless hours of research into documents, congressional acts, this is not a local problem, this is a national problem. There is even a group called Quiet Skies Coalition, that's, you know, that's national. There are bills pending in Congress that have been proposed from Congressman from Seattle. Our Congressman Moskowitz does not have any interest in this, he did file a noise complaint for me, but just delivered it. So did Senator, then Senator Marco Rubio, and so did Rick Scott. And the FAA just writes back to me very dismissive letters, saying, "We have a pilot shortage, and so suck it up," you know, with, this is, you know, and they don't have noise concerns, because the FAA is very clever, they measure noise over a twenty-four-hour average. Now, even government agencies have said this is, you know, useless, because you can have three really loud planes that are louder over a twenty-four-hour period, or that would average out over a twenty-four-hour period to be nothing. So that mode of measurement for noise from the FAA's part, I think, is, you know, is very self-protective, but not useful to the public, because we hear noise at eighty decibels and above. We measure it, and we know, because we've been doing this for so long, because of the increase in noise over the past few years. The airpark will say that the noise has not increased, that the traffic has gone down, but the flight schools have increased. Now, those are tenants of the Airpark of Pompano Aviation, and I don't know if Greg Spatz is here to speak about that, he has built more hangars for bigger jets, and this is all part of an airpark expansion plan. The public doesn't know or isn't, hasn't been informed or hasn't had workshops about that, it's in a master plan that expired in nineteen, or two thousand twenty-one, and I have not heard any, you, you said that you don't have any plans to redo that plan until another, another ten years?
So the FAA mandate or recommends that we do airport master plans every ten years, our last one was conducted in twenty twenty-one, so the next airport master plan will be explored in twenty thirty-one or beyond. We don't have to do it every ten years, the last one prior to twenty twenty-one was two thousand and eight, so we went almost thirteen or fourteen years before we did a new master plan.
But, you know, this expansion of the airpark is, you know, a problem for the community, and even the, safety is our main concern, noise is a byproduct of the low-flying planes. If the planes were higher when they're taking off and landing and at angles, you know, we have three runways, most airports only have one runway. So if a, if a pilot, if a student pilot can't learn how to fly... pilot can't learn how to fly on one runway at another airport, are they coming here because we have three? We now have six flight schools, correct, at the airport? Shelter Air just added another flight school. And we're just curious, two things. How do they get these business permits? Is the, is the business, is the city controlled, the business permits of these schools? And what do they add to our community? And what do they detract from our community? And we're also very concerned about the insurance policies of all the operators, the flight schools, the pilots, the experienced pilots who are also coming in. What happens if there's an accident? Who is responsible? When, there was an accident in 2016 where a plane crashed on Harbor Drive, and the two homeowners, I've spoken to them, they took care of their own damage through their own policies. One of them did. The other one was covered by the pilot's insurance. We have valuable homes, lives. What about the woman that was killed by the helicopter crash? There's a huge lawsuit from her family against Broward County. Do the taxpayers pay that kind of a suit? We want to know that the schools and the pilots are properly insured to be able to protect the people that they fly over. I was referred to the city, I can't say her name right now, I'm sorry, but I never got response back. She was out of the office. Then I got response on, on policies about property, not about liability. And I think that that's a question that we'd like the city to answer. I don't think I should have to go researching this. I think that the city should be able to give us that information on how we're going to be covered. And why the landlords of Shelter Air and Pompano Aviation are able to control what kind of businesses come into the, to the airpark. We're all for the school that wants to come in. We don't think that land should have to be demolished to build that school, but that's another topic. But the types of businesses that support the aircraft, we understand there's Z restrictions, and that everything there has to be aircraft-related. There are lots of other businesses besides flight schools that fly nonstop, 24/7. They do not respect the quiet hours. You know, we're woken up at 4:30 in the morning, at 6:00 in the morning, when you're trying to go to sleep at 11:00 at night, and there's planes flying overhead constantly. And because they are so low, that's why they are so loud. So we're looking to the FAA and the airpark and the city to help find a way to make this a cooperative airpark, where people can respect the taxpayers that they fly over. The FAA is concerned with pilot safety. What about the safety of those you're flying over? Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for that. Mr. Rocco?
Yes, sir.
Can you answer the, a couple of questions of Ms. DiMartini? The insurance requirements, and also why more, why more flight schools?
Okay. So the insurance requirement, that's a function of the risk management department in the city. They are responsible for insurance. And as far as the flight schools, each of the fixed base operators on the field have to adhere to the FBO minimum standards. There's several categories in the FBO minimum standards, from pilot training, flight schools, aircraft charter, aircraft maintenance and repair. As long as one of the, as long as the businesses that are subleasing with the FBOs adhere to the FBO minimum standards that the city adopted many, many years ago, they have the right to allow flight schools in avionics repair facilities, airframe power plant repair facilities, charter operators, flight schools. There's a, there's an aviation insurance operator on the field. So again, they have to adhere to the FBO minimum standards.
So, so just to follow up on, okay, you say the risk man, so in other words, every plane that's parked out there in the apron or in a hangar has to submit insurance certifications to the city of Pompano Beach?
Yes, they have to submit to the city. All of the businesses submit to the city risk management department, a certificate of insurance, holding the city harmless for their operation or that aircraft on the airfield.
Well, that's the businesses. What about just an individual who owns a plane out there, and they're renting apron space from Shelter or somewhere?
I believe they also have to provide to the fixed base operators their insurance certificates. And then Shelter Aviation and Pompano Aviation have also provided insurance policies to the city, holding the city harmless for their businesses, and I believe their sub-businesses on the, and I can follow up with both Shelter and Pompano Aviation on that.
If you would, that'd be good. And also, so as part of the FBO, FBO standards, you said, we adopted the FBO standards, supposing we modified the FBO standards to delete the category of flight schools?
So if you did.
And we do that?
Okay. So if we do that, and we can try, I believe what would happen is the flight school operators would then go to the FAA and say that they're being discriminated against, and restricted access to this federally funded, federally obligated facility. So it's, it's just a constant circle.
Very good. Thank you.
Mayor, I have something you're done.
Commissioner Fasik, you got some questions?
Just a couple of questions. So, so Ms. Rocco, this is actually really interesting. So we as a city, or we as an airpark, are we, we're leasing to these operators, correct?
We lease to the prime tenants, Shelter Aviation, Pompano Aviation, Goodyear. Yes.
Okay. Is there anything, so for instance, is there anything we think we could do to, for instance, like if you were to rent a commercial location, a lot of times what happens is they might have some rules or some sort of guidelines of what you can and cannot do. And now, obviously, I know we can't handle, we can't direct anything that would conflict with FAA standards. But is there something that we can put into our lease agreement when, you know, that would be somewhat, a little bit more restrictive in terms of having them be able to adhere more solidly to our noise guidelines as operating a business, as opposed to, because I don't really think we're having a lot of issues with general aviation or the standard pilot. I think that the issue tends to be the businesses that are running. We just want to make sure that they have every right, every right to run, and every right to run their business. But that they want to also be a good neighbor, just as much as the pilots do. So, so that the pilots don't, you know, so the average pilot doesn't get blamed for the problems that we're experiencing, or that the neighbors are experiencing through the frustration of the not being, the policies not being followed. Does that make sense?
Yes. So, and again, I believe that would be an issue for the city attorney.
Okay. Yeah, probably both, probably above both are.
So you can't really answer that question?
No.
Okay. We've got someone here from the city attorney's office. Can you, he just punched the ball, the ball to you, so.
Tagged.
Yeah. And if you want to, if you want to say, well, okay, he can answer the question. Could do that, too.
Well, I can always find.
Introduce yourself, please.
James Saunders, Assistant City Attorney. One of the things I think that's pervasive.
Closer, James. Closer.
Really close.
Yeah, I want to hear.
Understood. One of the pervasive things that has been said multiple times over and over again is that the FAA is the governing jurisdiction. So our leases are going to have to be compliant, more than willing our office to look and see if there's opportunity to tweak. But again, we have to be very careful that those terms are going to be, buzzwords are reasonable and nondiscriminatory. So anything that we're doing, any action we're taking, anything that's being proposed by the public has to follow those two guidelines. It must be reasonable, and it also must be nondiscriminatory. So we'll take a look at anything that may be suggested, and look at some of those things that were mentioned by Mr. Rocco earlier, that our office needs to look at in regards to ordinances, changes, and those kinds of things.
And just to, just to, just to follow up on that, just so while you're looking into that, Casey was kind enough to also mention that Naples and Naples Lantana and Boca had some pretty interesting, you know, just, they had really good communication. So if there might be something in any one of those airparks that we might be able to sort of not reinvent the wheel.
Will do.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Very good. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I do think it's kind of a slippery slope trying to restrict business, and maybe not the way to go about this. But it's always good to look at things. I think the question of insurance is still, it's, I appreciate that Steve's going to look into it, but I don't know that it was completely covered. So if there's aircraft at our airports, parked there, maybe they need insurance. But Marilyn is also asking, what about all these other aircraft coming in to do touch-and-gos, things like that? So just trying to get our arms around what the requirements are generally. So we might have, I don't know if it's different here, or if there's some kind of overarching guidelines about insurance that all airparks have to follow. So if, and the other thing that she mentioned was our advisory board. I have been to those meetings also. And I like to think that there's an opportunity for those, that board to be more effective, because it has kind of devolved into some screaming and a lot of tension. So maybe the commission can consider adding a seat or doing something to give representation to the community, or the community organization on that board, and try to have that board get answers on things like insurance and those follow-up items, to make sure we stay on top of it. And then, obviously, we'll get the minutes and those answers. But I think we should try to think about how to use that board more effectively also going forward. Thank you.
So, Mr. Rocco, what about, you know, just somebody who flies to our airpark and does a touch-and-go, and we have no way of knowing if they have insurance or not?
Correct. So, I was just going to say that. So if someone comes from a flight school, Fort Lauderdale Executive, North Perry Airport, and they want to use Pompano Beach Airport for doing and performing their touch-and-gos, they have the right to do it again, because it's a federally funded, federally obligated facility. But we would have no idea if they have insurance or not. So.
Right. And do we have any ability to put guidelines in for touch-and-gos versus full-stop and taxi backs?
So we can make recommendations. And in our airpark advisor, in our airpark voluntary noise abatement guidelines, I suggest and request that we would prefer full-stop landings and taxi backs as opposed to touch-and-gos.
I read it in there. But maybe, again, I think we need to kind of revisit this. And maybe this is where we put the mandate back on the advisory board and try and beef that board up with some people who can really help us. Like, I don't know, where is Casey? I know, I don't know if you have to be a resident or not, but I'd love for you to be on that board. Let's, as a commission, also think about who we're putting on that board, and maybe see if we can add some seats to make it really more effective with giving guidelines on, or giving feedback on this stuff. That's it. Thank you.
So, Ms. Rocco, on the, on the insurance issue, is there a universal standard on insurance on aircraft, or that the FAA has?
That, that I do not know. Again, that would be a question for risk management, risk manager.
Okay.
Ms. Cindy Lawrence.
If you could, if you could find, find out about that kind of, because I mean, Ms. DiMartini, she's, she's got a valid point. How do you know if the aircraft that's flying over your house has insurance or not? And it, and what the limits are. And it would be interesting for us to have that information to pass out to the residents who are interested. So if you could find that out, I understand it's risk management, but you would know how to ask the questions. And I understand there's no way to know that about, you know, somebody who comes in from FXE or something like that. But at least based at our airpark, and is there some sort of universal standard that might, might make some people feel better? And also, on the vice mayor's issue about the full-stop taxi back, has, that wasn't, that was not what the lawsuit was about previously, was it?
No, it was about the restrictions that the city imposed in the ordinance 9579, saying that you can only do touch-and-gos.
Okay, that's, that's good. No, no sufficient. Thank you. But the full-stop taxi back, is that, is that, has that been done at any other airports in the country?
It's recommended, but you can, you can't.
So the FAA doesn't let us, the FAA doesn't allow that anywhere in the country?
No, they'll allow full-stop taxi backs. But again, it's a recommendation.
So in other words, FAA will not allow us to mandate that?
Correct.
Okay. Has it ever been tried before?
That I do not know.
Maybe, maybe the FAA knows that. Jimmy?
Well, I think the, the last letter that was presented from, what, Marco Rubio, that was sent with, to me, was it Marco Rubio? No, Rebecca Henry, the acting manager for ADO, I believe. But she sent the letter, what, in 2012, about trying to restrict what you're talking about, about touch-and-gos and stuff like that. And she stated that under 49 U.S. Code, 47, 107A1, the airport will be available for public use on reasonable conditions and without unjust discrimination.
And unjust discrimination would be requiring full-stop taxi back?
Well, limiting their touch-and-gos, or whatever that you're trying to, I mean, I'm not sure what you're trying to accomplish. Are you trying to limit, are you trying to limit their touch-and-gos?
I mean, honestly, touch-and-gos, touch-and-gos are the issue. Touch-and-gos are the problem. Because what happens with a touch-and-go is anybody who flies knows. I mean, you could, you could, in five minutes, you can teach somebody how to take off. What they're, what they're doing out there is they're, they're practicing the landings. And people get lazy. When they're taking off, they're not paying attention. They're not doing what they need to do to get, to gain the altitude, to get higher. So, and they've got plenty of runway there, so they just kind of lazily take off after their touch-and-go, and don't get up high enough to prevent the noise issue. If we had full-stop taxi back, they've got much more runway. They'll pay much more attention getting up to altitude before they get over the houses. So, yeah, one would really help the other. And that's, that's the question about full-stop taxi backs. But if the FAA says, well, that would be discriminatory, I just wondered why. And I know it's probably above your pay grade.
Yeah, it's probably, it's above me. I would say you'd have to get with the manager's office at ADO to.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I have a quick follow-up on that. Yeah. So, so when you contact ATC, and you say you want to do a touch-and-go, I mean, why can't ATC say Pompano is a full-stop taxi back recommended airport? I mean, that's not mandated. But if you came back and said that every time, so you're approved for that, you know, then if, if a pilot pushed on it, they, you know, I'm doing a touch-and-go or whatever, like, that's different. But if, why can't ATC say things, say things like that?
I couldn't answer that question.
Okay. Well, let's get an answer to that.
ATC. Can you, can you?
We need some from ATC.
Yeah. Can you get with them, Steve?
Yes.
Get the information on that? Because, yeah, I mean, it's.
Like you said, we're recommended, we recommend full-stop touching, instead of touch-and-gos.
We're not saying you got to do it.
Right. At our airport for, you know, noise concerns, that's what you're cleared for. Cleared to land.
That's really it. Very good. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question.
Sure. Darling, Commissioner Smith?
For, for private license, Carrie and Casey, you both have private license, do you have to have insurance to have a license? No? No. Thank you.
Very good. Next speaker, please come forward. This is, this is about taking public input here, too. Anybody?
Can I just ask?
If, does anybody else wish to speak? If, if not, then Ms. DiMartini, you can have a second to go ahead. Sure.
I just want to clarify on the insurance, that when we find out about what the limitations are of those policies, are we, as residents, underneath these pilots adequately covered if something happens? What are their, how much insurance do they need to have? And that's what we were saying, we're going to try to find out from risk management. And is that enough? Can we increase those requirements? Because if one of our houses gets hit, and a fire goes to the next house, which is what happened in 2016, and what if, luckily, there was no loss of life there. I mean, we're talking serious liabilities. And in today's society, as litigious as it is, I think we need to know specifics on insurance liability. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Further input from the public? Okay. Mr. Mc, please come forward. Just name an address for the record.
Don McNeil, 2720 Northeast Sixth Street in Pompano, Harbor Village area. Also Chairman of the Airport Advisory Board Committee. Couple of points, since you're talking first about insurance, my experience with insurance is each individual, like, say, the Flying Club, has to show that they have insurance, whether it be an umbrella or whatever. The Flying Club's aircraft were carrying insurance on each aircraft. This was, example was an accident at FXE about 15 years ago, where a pilot put one into a warehouse. The Flying Club, who wasn't, the airplane was certified fine, and the NTSB said the airplane was fine. But the, they still paid out a million dollars insurance, just from the Flying Club. I have no idea exactly how much the estate had to pay or whatever, but that was our liability from the Flying Club itself. And I believe, I'm not sure, that once you get your aircraft registered, you have to carry insurance, just pretty much like an automobile. But that I, I can't 100% confirm on that. Other item is, we had one of the previous speakers talk about a violation of, well, there's no violation when you're in a transitional area, and you're trying to climb out. And you may feel like that person at 200, 300 feet is violating something. Yeah, violating your personal space, maybe. But you can't really term that as a violation. It's just non-compliance with recommended procedures. And thirdly, like from Mr. Rocco, we've talked about this before, of getting some of the flying schools that do come in. And I live, I watch it at midnight, I watch this clown out there. I go, why are you doing touch-and-gos at midnight? And it's really not necessary. I mean, you could do, hey, you could front-end your touch-and-gos. There's so many different solutions that Flying Clubs, or not Flying Clubs, but the flight schools can institute as far as being good. as far as being good neighbors. And I think that's really kind of what it breaks down to. I think we got a safe airport, we got three runways, which gives tremendous amount of choice, favorable winds, et cetera. Now, economics, yeah, you, if you live, or if your facility is at the approach end of 1028, yeah, it's a three minute taxi, do a run up and go. You could get, it's, it's just all about the economics, that aspect of it. Is that what we want is as, you know, neighbors living in the transitional area, yeah, I would prefer taxi over to 15, but even though it does go over my house, the person gets hopefully to 300, 400 feet prior to, over the residential areas. That's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, Ms. McNeil. Go ahead, next speaker? We'll, we'll take anybody at this point. It seems like that nobody wants to step up. Nothing personal, I didn't mean that, I didn't mean that the way it may have come across. I apologize.
You're scraping the bottom of the barrel.
No, 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 no. Back to, back to the top.
All right. So if it's okay, if it's okay with you guys, so I had went ahead and, because I didn't know really what the structure of the meeting was going to be in advance, obviously, coming here. So thanks to the, kind of the group of citizens that we have as a whole, and thanks for talking with a number of the different pilots that were out there. And basically, we've spoken with FXE, we've spoken with Boca, we've spoken with Perry, Lantana, we've been busy. And, and the, the truth of the matter is, there's a couple of interesting things that are out there. One is actually FXE has a designated safety and noise person there, Patrick. Are you familiar with Patrick?
Yes.
So Patrick was fantastic. And Patrick makes it clear that his job is basically to kind of be the bridge between the, the aviation community as a whole and the citizens groups that exist out there and making sure that noise abatement is heard, low flying is concerned, steering people in the right directions and other things like that. Here at Pompano Air Park, we have a number that you call. Sometimes Steve answers, sometimes Amy answers, and if no one answers, it goes to a voicemail that may or not, may not be returned candidly. You know, so that being said, having somebody perhaps, if we're willing to explore the opportunity of having somebody, now, he does double work. He also does operations at the airport as well, but he is a designated professional who basically is there to oversee low flying aircraft, noise abatement and other things like that, and also goes directly to the schools, goes directly to the hangars on a regular basis to make sure that they're adhering to the guidelines that exist there at FXE. I'd like to see if possible, the city explore that opportunity to do the same here. I think that's a great reach out there to consider. The signage, I think improving the signage as best as we can, because that was an overture that I, you know, before I chose to speak up in July, I spoke, I spoke for a very long period of time with airport professionals that are in and around the air park. And some of the overriding themes, some of which were basically, we didn't even know about it. We didn't know noise abatement existed. Had we known? So I think, I think actually, one of the points that came up was excellent, which is actually, I think maybe we're doing a great job trying to make sure that American flyers and all the other aviation schools are out there, but maybe the private flyers and the civic groups that are out there and other people like this, maybe we can do a better job from an awareness end to make sure that everybody basically there is being a good neighbor. Because at the moment, as residents, being good, a good neighbor feels like it's a one way street at the moment with the air park. So that's how it feels. Whether, whether the, the aviation community feels the same way, I don't know, but as a resident who lives right off of 10, you know, last night alone, we had at 10:30 at night, there was six, all, all, it was Florida Aviation. Now, I will tell you, Florida Aviation has a private policy internally, I don't know if it's changed, but they limit their touch and goes to just two. I think, I understand that there's continuing education that needs to happen after dark and other things like this for these pilots to get the necessary requirements to train and to fly, et cetera. Asking, asking each of the, you know, each of the schools reasonably to try to cap that in the afternoons, albeit volunteering, okay, but saying, hey, can we limit this? You know, let's, let's not have an endless parade, because when there's six of them encircled going like that, it was every 30 seconds. 30 seconds, my house was shaking every 30 seconds. And not, but, you know, enough to basically have a 13 year old and an 11 year old child, so both of which basically were regularly being, you know, woken up until it stopped at 11:00 P.M. So, you know, with that, that would be great. Fat, you know, again, you know, from the FAA, I want to thank you again for coming. Your, your, your involvement, I know, I don't take this lightly, I'm very thrilled that you guys are here and very glad that you are. If I could ask you to do anything from, from our end, you know, two things if possible. One, help us facilitate that relationship with the FADO to, to try to get, you know, to try to get that dialogue around the runways, that would be outstanding. And also, since they are out of your MIRAMR office as well, if you can help with ATC, to try to help bridge that gap between basically what the residents here are going through and how we can make sure that we prioritize basically the two longer runways when, when winds permit and everything like that, and even if it's a dead wind like it was last night, last night was a dead wind. It was zero, and yet we were still using runway 10 last night.
Hmm.
Right? So, you know, I just have a couple of recommendations if it's okay, and I'm just going to hand one to you, Mr. Rocco, because it's for the air park, one to you actually around the FAA, if that's okay?
Sure.
And commissioners, if it's okay, because my printer didn't work, I will email all of you guys a copy of this as well.
That'd be great.
Okay?
Thank you.
So thank you all very much again for having this. Hopefully, we can arrive to some sort of dialogue and solution that comes out of this that makes this. Oh, one last thing if possible. Can we do some sort of annualized event that actually goes behind recognizing the air park and opening it up maybe to the community as a whole, so that basically the air park, the pilots, the flight schools, the, the new, the new mechanical facility that's opening up, that we feel like it is part of our, of our city as a whole?
Yeah. So I know in the past that we've had aviation days at the airport. I believe that Mr. Greg Spats and Wayne Asbury have done some outreach with aviation education programs. You know, in the past, we used to have, and again, it's up to the fixed base operators because they have the money and the ability to put on these aviation open houses, so to speak, for citizens and people to come to the airport.
And I can help you out with that too, because that's what I do. I do outreach and stuff for the, all the airports around here. So for like next weekend, we have Operation Safe going at Opa-lock Airport, you know, that's Friday, Saturday, which, or, yeah, Friday, Saturday, which is Aviation Day, we have 5,000 students coming on Friday to visit and get engaged with aviation. And then on Saturday is Girls' Aviation Day, so.
Can we do one here?
Yeah, absolutely.
That would be wonderful.
There you go.
Okay.
And the city, the city will get behind it also. We've got, we've got some pretty good marketing resources that we utilize on the city side.
I happen to see it. Thank you all again.
Very good, thank you. Next speaker? Yes, sir. Just name an address to the record, please.
Oh, sure.
Martin Cooper, 1031 Northeast 28th Avenue, Pompano Beach, Florida, the newest member of the aviation board here at the airport. I volunteered at the last meeting. I'll do all the, whatever, wherever I need to go for free, no charge. I'm semi-retired. I still fly corporate, but only when they call. So I'll do any noise abatement outreach, whatever's required, I'll go to the schools, I'll do whatever's required. No, no, you know, no charge to the city or anything like that.
Wow, you're hired.
All right. The other thing is, when I was in charge of startup operation for Pan Am Express, it was our Miami startup, we had jet streams, really loud airplane, had Garrett engines, screamed. Anyway, I was in charge of that training and on the subject of, I used to face this with Fort Lauderdale, on the basis of full stop taxi back. The FAA sees it as a complete movement, meaning like you could do those all night and day, even if you print like Lauderdale does, no training. A full stop taxi back doesn't even count as, you know, the only thing they count for training is continuous touch and goes. And another thing that doesn't count is the go around. You can come in, go around all night, all day long, and that doesn't count as training either. You know, only the touch and go is, you know, the big, you know, the big gotcha, you know, because it eats up a lot of runway. One zero is the runway of choice, so I believe because of the placement of the tower, the tower can see the airplanes right in front of them. We just have to change that culture. One of the things that would help, of course, if we move the tower, but that's going to take a couple of years, and I guess we're already in process of moving it. The tower was in a different position to see the entire airport, rather than being stuck in the World War II position where it's, it currently is now, would change the entire picture. The, the tower could then see the entire airport from a different angle and, and decide which runway is in use. So it's, the one zero has just been, it's, it's like the Pompano standardized the runway, which goes straight up over the houses. The other thing I just looked up is, we can print NADP1 and NADP2 on our departure page for Pompano for, for noise abatement. We can actually print that onto our page for information.
What do you mean, what do you mean your page?
You know, our, our Pompano Airport, you know, information page in the FAA information guide, we can print, we require NADP1 and NADP2 jet takeoff noise abatement.
Are you talking about having everything on your, your iPad?
Yes. Well, yeah, we can put it on the Jefferson page, we can have them print that, and we can put it on the.
Yeah, you have your electronic flight bag.
Yes, we can put it also, we can also put that onto our government chart. We can print out that we're NADP1, NADP2, which we don't have right now. So that's the standard noise abatement for jets, and it's two different profiles. NADP1 for jets is more restrictive, meaning you're going to retract your gear, keep your flops down, and you're going to climb at your best rate up to, up to 3,000 feet, where in NADP2, you climb up to 800 feet, which is still great, and you wouldn't, you wouldn't even hear the jet. And we, we def, you know, we, I'm, you know, all for keeping the jets here. One of the big draw of multimillion dollar condos which we have going up is these people own jets. One, they're quieter, they all meet the new latest standards, there are no more old jets left. So you, you can drop the jet thing out, you know, the back door, they meet all the latest quality standards. You would never even hear them arrive, you know. You follow Boca's standards, they keep the gear and flops and everything until 1,500 feet, you could read their arrivals, you know, they, and that's also posted. So one, we can change our page, NADP1, NADP2 for jets, that could be put into our information page on our, you know, the airport diagram. So we, we can do that. The other thing is, full stops and taxi back counts as a full operation. You can do that 24 hours a day, seven days a week at any airport, even when the airport says there's no training allowed. What's the big draw of Pompano? Everyone's like, what's the big draw? So having done this, I've had to take, you know, five jet streams, this is way back, five turboprops with my pilots and everything, because we didn't have simulators at the time. So I've been in aviation now coming up on 55 years, I guess I'm coming up for the right award, I just haven't applied for it. Anyway, what's the draw? The draw is, we have fire rescue. So when you're training, when you're flying and everything, anything can happen at any time, you know, you've seen accidents and everything, we have fire rescue, that's a huge draw. I mean, it's, safety, safety matters. So it's, it's in our, you know, it was great for Pompano to be able to put out, you know, a fire station right on the airport and, you know, protect the operation. That's a huge draw. You go to wherever it is, West, West Palm Beach, I don't know the executive, you're out in the middle of nowhere, you know, anything happens, it's going to be a while, you know, for anything happens. So I, I had to take my turboprops out to what they call TNT, Training and Transition, Alcatraz, whatever it's called, Alligator Alcatraz. Okay, it's a thrill. So, you know, it's, it's pitch black in the middle of nowhere, there's no rescue, no fire rescue or anything. You know, and I'm training new pilot, even, you know, there was a number of accidents out there, an old Eastern Airlines DC9 circled the land in pitch black darkness, rolled it in short. You know, I mean, there's been a number of accidents out at TNT. If anything happens at TNT, you're gone before they ever get to you, you know, before you can ever get the call out or anything. You know, you're out in the middle of nowhere. So that's the draw of Pompano. We have safety. We're close to the beach. You know, we have, you know, we need the airport, we have multimillion dollar condo people coming in with multimillion dollar jets, and that's really what we want. All the business has increased, you know, the hangars get rented, the maintenance operations get to work on the jets, and I think this is, it's definitely a safer all around operation. So anyway, that's the, you know, that's the big draw of Pompano. We have it, and everyone wants to be here. The other thing that's really good where Lantana runs into trouble is, they're in the TFR, you know, so anytime, you know, the president's in town, they can't fly, they can't go anywhere. You know, you have to file in one time, file out one time. You know, there's no touch and goes or anything like that. So we have the benefit of not being in the TFR. So we have a lot of benefits of, of being in Pompano. And, you know, we, we just want to keep the business going, you know, and, you know, and keep it up.
Very good. I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you very much. Yes, it's, Mr. Rocco?
Yes, sir.
Question for you based upon that gentleman. If the tower was in a different location, would, would that change anything as far as the, the runways?
So we've just completed a tower sighting study, and part of the recommendation of the tower sighting study is we're going to replace the tower basically next to the existing tower, however, it'll be 50 feet higher than the current tower. So they'll have better visibility of all the runways from the new tower site location. We're not anywhere near design or building this. It's several years away because we're waiting on, again, FAA funding, but we've just completed the tower sighting study. So we know where it's going to be, and we know that it will be a taller, it'll be 110 foot tall tower.
But, but, but the question is, is the existing tower contributing to the use of 1028 as opposed to other, other runways?
And I don't believe so, again, because our current tower, even, even though runway 15 end is further away, a little bit more difficult to see, I don't believe that's the reason why they keep, again, they use runway 10 as, as been stated, all of the, most of the flight schools from that end of the field, runway six and runway 10 are right there, and that's where they taxi to.
Gotcha, thank you.
It's cheaper.
Next speaker? Go ahead, sure, come on. Please come forward, just name an address for the record.
Okay, Doug Lukart, 720 Northeast 31st Street in Pompano. And I'd just like to speak to the, the idea of, well, first, I'm an airplane owner. When my wife and I moved to Pompano 20 years ago, we looked at all the airports in the area, drew a two mile circle around them and found a house. So, you know, airplane owner, we, our plane has been here all these years. But what I want to address here is over complications. It seems like so many of these solutions that people are proposing, they're very complex. They, they get right down to the, to the least detail of what we can do. And I'll only give one example. This example is touch and goes versus the full stops and taxi backs, that, how this relates to the flight schools, that touch and goes use less fuel, touch and goes use less time, student pilots are generally speaking dirt poor, you know, and need all the help they can get. They're struggling. You know, they're living six to a room sometimes, we know several of these. My wife is also privately an instructor, so we have a lot of contact with that. And I think that this, they need all the help, and doing, restricting touch and goes for an airport with all of these flight schools would be counterproductive. But that's just one thing, I'm just talking about oversimplification in general, that we have to be very well aware of, of proposing all these very complex things for what may be solvable problems, I don't know. But anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it, sir. Thank you so much. Further input from the public? Anybody else? Anybody else going once? Okay, here we go. Just name an address to the record.
Dave Botzer, 1110 Northeast 27th Avenue in Pompano. I question why the air, the aircraft industry is exempt from all regulations when every other industry in, in the world has regulations, but there's none with the FAA. You know, I, I, I just, I can't comprehend how they can get away with, with it. And for instance, we have city ord, city noise ordinances that restrict building, landscaping, and so on and so forth, and they can't be enforced. We're woken up all hours of the, of the day and night from these low-flying aircraft. And my next thing is, is I would like to see that people from the community are on the airport advisory board, so we can bring to you, the commissioners, the problems that we have through non, non-aviation people. I, I think it's unfair that when, when I sit before the, the board over there, everyone is all about it, and alls we get is, it can't be regulated, and we can't do this, and we can't do that. I appreciate that we're here to figure that out, and I would certainly like to see people from the community that are not involved in the aircraft industry sitting on the board of the airport, because we are the ones that are affected by it. Thank you for your time.
Very good, thank you. Further input from the public? Please come forward. I don't want to cut anybody off.
Good morning, everyone. Doreen Wallink, 954 Northeast 26 Ave. Thank you very much for holding this forum, and I truly appreciate the FAA coming to join us and listening to our concerns. I think most of the concerns have been because of the flight schools and the inexperienced pilots and the low-flying aircraft to our safety. I live on Harbor Drive, five houses down from where the accident happened in 2016, and was one of the first people on the scene that helped pull one of the people over the fence. I don't think I'll ever get the smell of burned flesh out of my nose and the sight of that and the terror of that. And I really don't want to see that happen again. The city, correct me if I'm wrong, is the landlord for the airport, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Landlords have certain guidelines, rules, regulations that they all need to adhere to. The city has density and zoning regulations for builders, and if builders or contractors violate the density and the zoning, there are penalties available. Is there a way to limit the number of flight schools? To ask the flight schools that they have intermediate and advanced training rather than beginners? You know, a few things to ponder and question, that how can the city effectively work with the residents to improve our safety concerns, our noise concerns, and to limit the problems that we're having? I think that's the reason that, you know, everybody has become so vocal about a lot of things, is, you know, you, you have a right to certain quiet enjoyment of your own property. And when, when you are concerned about safety and you're constantly inundated with noise, you, your health and your, you don't sleep well, you don't feel well, you don't act well, you know? And I think that everybody has a right to feel comfortable at home. And, you know, and I truly appreciate everybody coming and listening to this. And Steve, you've heard my complaints, you know, I, I call you all the time, and I apologize if I've been short sometimes, but you know, I work from home. I'm at the end of runway 10, I mean, right there. And, you know, sometimes I'm on a call with one of my international customers. I can't hear anything, you know? It, it, it affects my business. It affects my livelihood. And, you know, there, I have impact windows, I have a new roof, I have, I mean, I put extra insulation in, you know, hoping to alleviate some of the problems, you know? And I, I, there's got to be a way that we can all work together and to do this more effectively than what's happening, you know? And I, and I think the city as a landlord, you know, has a responsibility to look into these flight schools. How many times can they sublet? You know, can, you know, if, if you have a bad tenant that doesn't pay their rent or that's running a meth lab, you know, aren't you as a responsible landlord? Don't you go to file the eviction papers for non-payment of rent? You know? Or if it's a, you know, if it's a safety issue like a meth lab, you go to BSO, you know, look, I've got a tenant that's running a meth lab in here, let's get him out. You know? We want good tenants. We want good, responsible growth at the airpark, and good tenants that are going to be productive for the city. You know, the city's come a long way in many years. Look at the gorgeous buildings on the beach, you know, and like the gentleman mentioned, these are private pilots coming in with jets. The jets aren't the problem. They're in, they're out, you know? You hear a scream for two seconds and bye. It's the, it's the constant buzz of the single piston engines that are the problem. And that's, I think, the biggest concern of the, of this, of the residents. Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you, appreciate it. Any further input from the public? Hey, wait, wait. Any further input from the public? Going once? Going twice? Okay, first I'm going to hear from Mr. Mueller, then I'll hear from Mr. McLean, and we'll, and that'll be it. Mr. McLean, you're, you'll, you'll, you'll end it. McNeil, I apologize, Mr. McNeil.
He probably speaks better than me anyways.
I just want to make sure we gave everybody else an opportunity here, okay?
Just real quick on a couple of things. So runway 10, so we were talking about where the tower, the new tower is getting placed. Last year during a construction meeting, I believe an ATC representative was questioned about why there was a preference shown during that construction meeting, why there was a preference towards runway 1028. Do you recall that meeting?
No.
Okay. So as I understand it, from some of the flight professionals that were there, the actual answer was, is because of the fact that they're able to see the tail numbers clearly on runway 10, even though basically runway six and 15 are the longer runways, are the safer runways, but they were choosing runway 10 because they could see the tail numbers clearly without binoculars?
I'm not aware.
Okay. So if possible, if we can look into that, because basically, that's something that basically tells me that that's not a safety decision, that, that is a decision being made solely off of the convenience of the ATC professional that is there, and not, and not based upon the safety of the residents or the pilots?
Again, I can't speak for the FAA, the ATC, but I believe regardless of whether they can see the end number or not, every aircraft and pilot that comes out there on a two-way radio communication, they're announcing their end number to the control tower. So the control tower, whether they can see the end number or not, and most times you can, even on the ground level, if the airplane is at a certain angle, you're not going to be able to see the end number. So that's why they communicate by, again.
I mean, it's, it's, at some point, if we can just verify, you know, and obviously if not, instruct whoever that would be if possible. I understand it's more convenient, but let's do the safe, you know, the safe and most responsible thing for pilots and residents. In regards to runway 10 as well, something else that struck me was with pilots who were leaving out of runway 10, when I was speaking with many of them, one of the things that they said is, is versus runway six and versus runway 15, there's nowhere safe in the event of an emergency landing to land. I think that's something that's interesting, and we should look at as well if we get a chance. I'm not sure if that falls under. Obviously, I believe it does. But if you take a look at the periphery, if you go out and look as you're leaving runway 10, the only thing that you might be able to land safely a plane in the event of a mechanical failure or pilot error is the intercoastal or the ocean beyond it. So that severely limits, and then everything else is residential, everything else is the beautiful new towers that we've basically built, the high rises, the parking garages, all the other stuff that we've spent millions upon millions of dollars developing there. So I, you know, I do hope when we're making those decisions to use runway 10, we're thinking about that, we're thinking about the proximity to the residents that are there, and realizing that every time that we make that decision that is there, even if the pilot is climbing at their expected rate of climb, right, at the safe rate of climb, even if they're doing it, they're still not basically getting to an adequate height before they're approaching residential. Even if they're playing by the rules of the game, they're still not able to get to that, that altitude. One other thing, too, in fact, Doreen actually just brought this up a second ago, so if the landlord is the city for the airpark, and since we can't necessarily find anybody for violations per the FAA regulations and the lawsuits, et cetera, why can we not consider a tax credit or a credit in some fashion at the end of every annualized year to the professionals, the businesses, the flight schools who do adhere to the rules and regulations that we establish?
A carrot, carrot proposition.
Correct. That's it from me, guys. So thank you again very much. Thank you for the time, thank you for hearing us.
Thank you, appreciate it. Good idea. Last speaker.
Just, just a quick statement and note, the airport advisory board is made up of residents, not commercial contractors or, or such, from each district. So it just kind of was a false information out there saying that we have people that are maybe pilots, but they're no longer involved in, or they have their own airplanes, but they're not involved in the commercial aviation, so to speak, so the sale aircraft, and more or less to advise and enhance the airport. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Appreciate your service on the airport advisory committee. All right, that ends public input. Thank you very much for being here, everyone, and thank you to everyone for making this thing happen. Now, commission discussion.
Mayor?
Commissioner Sigerson Eaton.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it was a really good meeting, and I, I just want to thank all of those who've come up and made their input, very many informed pilots and professionals in the industry. And I was dealing with a different sort of noise all, all this weekend, and I recognize no matter where it comes from, it's still interrupts your peaceful enjoyment of your property, and I get it. It's a complicated issue, as things generally tend to be, but I think overall, I see a coop, I see a cooperation between the city, the airpark. We need to work with the flight schools, and as our airport, our airpark is slated to be expanded with the Barrington Irving training facility and some other changes to help with safety coming up, I'm encouraged. And I'm very encouraged by this meeting, and I just, I feel that it's not going to be just a one-day, one-off, that this is going to continue, and to the best of our ability, we're going to look for solutions. And one of my favorite sayings, saying, as a commissioners, some might know is, who wrote the book? Somebody wrote the book. So I feel books can always be changed, like the, Ms. DiMartini said, the word "nothing can be done" doesn't enter into my vocabulary either. So I, I think it was a great meeting, and just thank you all for coming. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Fessick?
Yeah, I just want to, I would have to fully agree there. I want to really thank everybody, because I know that in some instances, this has been contentious on both sides of the fence, people being, you know, and I want to really commend everybody for truly coming together and really working together to kind of meet each other halfway. And I really hope that we could continue to do this and work with all parties, not, not just airpark advisory, not just residents, but with airpark, with, you know, Mr. Rocco and, and FAA, and just keep this conversation going, and, and realize that we are all humans and we are all, you know, like Doreen, I believe, said, you know, sometimes you're just kind of at your wits' end, but at the same time, I, I really appreciate everybody taking the time to really come together and, and do so in a way that was very respectful to one another, and I look forward to, to seeing what we can accomplish together. And of course, as always, anytime my, my email, my phone number, it's open, so you can call and yell at me if you want to as well. Thanks.
Very good, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I just want to kind of wrap up also. This was a great meeting. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. We have a lot of amazing assets in the community, from residents who care, pilots, there's so much knowledge and experience in this room, and I, I think everyone generally wants to help and, and do good and be part of the solution. So I'm encouraged from this today, that we've brought maybe the temperature down and come up with some, some actionable items that, that we do need to make sure we have follow-up on. So, you know, from talking to ATC, an education campaign, better signage, I'm happy Mr. Cooper's going to do some seminars at the flight schools on our noise, our voluntary noise abatement procedures. The, there, you know, I think, I'm sure the city management team has a list of follow-ups, and I think as a commission, we should also, at some point when our meetings, talk about the advisory board and, and make sure that we, or it's the most effective use of it right now. I mean, I've been to the meetings, and I appreciate all the work they do, but maybe this is one of those where we need direct nominees instead of, instead of commission, you know, voted nominees. So something that we should, we could consider, like we've done to some of the other boards, to make sure that our districts feel adequately represented on it also. But thank you, everyone, for coming out, and I look forward to getting the follow-up from Mr. Rocco and the FAA. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right, nothing further. Thank you very much, folks. I appreciate you coming out and your patience with us as we work through all the issues in the city of Pompano Beach. So thank you very much. This meeting's adjourned.